Okay, so, um, would you please all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call of council, please.
Councilmember Easton?
Here.
Councilmember Farr?
Here.
Councilmember Perotti?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Bennett?
Here.
Mayor Acevis?
Here.
Mr. Giles, report from closed session, please.
City council had an opportunity to meet in closed session this afternoon. Continued item from their 12 o'clock special meeting agenda, conference, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section 54957 with regard to personnel matter, city manager evaluation, no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the audience that like to speak to the council on items not, I should say, on the item, not on tonight's agenda? Madam, clearly we have no speaker slips?
No speaker slips.
Okay, Mr. Singer, any adjustments or amendments?
No.
Okay, then we'll go right to item D1. Would you please read?
Item D1, Hollister Avenue redesign project status report and proposed bike lane modification options.
Mr. Wagner and Ms. Caglione.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight's item is regarding possible future improvements to the Galita Old Town corridor of Hollister through Galita Old Town. And first, we're going to give a little context of the discussion and how we ended up where we are today. And we've got a brief slideshow and some attachments to look at. I know there's quite a few people wanting to speak to this item, so we'll try to keep it as brief as possible. There is a bit of information to cover. First, in terms of kind of a history of the context, discussions on improvements to the Hollister Avenue corridor in Old Town have been going on for years, and they actually predate the city of Galita. In fact, prior to the city of Galita, the county adopted the Galita Old Town revitalization plan, which called for improvements to the Hollister Avenue corridor, along with several other large-scale capital improvements, several of which are in construction or under final design, getting ready for construction currently. The Old Town Plan envision, vision for Hollister Avenue, well, first, the goal was stated, was to foster a more appealing downtown village atmosphere and help stimulate economic development. But what's interesting about the Old Town revitalization plan that was adopted before cityhood is the plan called for a lot of things to happen within the corridor. It called for four lanes of traffic, it called for wide sidewalks, striped bike lanes, landscape improvements, center turn lanes. And when you look at this, what was called for, the total width of what was envisioned, what we call the unconstrained, was about 118 feet end to end. When you add all that stuff up, the challenge, and what wasn't really identified unfortunately in the revitalization plan, is there's not that much right-of-way available. The current right-of-way existing street section is about 90 feet from right-of-way line to right-of-way line. So, right off the bat, there's about a 28-foot difference. In other words, you cannot fit everything envisioned in the revitalization plan, the four lanes, the bike lanes, the turn lanes, the wider sidewalk, landscape mediums, whatever, within the right-of-way. If you, in fact, if you were to contemplate constructing what was envisioned in the plan, you would need to acquire additional right-of-way, since the existing businesses and buildings are pretty much built right up to the right-of-way line, it would involve possibly tearing down existing buildings in order to build that envisioned corridor. So, right off the bat, there is a bit of a quandary with the Old Town Plan as adopted and as we inherited it. So, what staff started to do is to look at possible scenarios of what would fit within the existing right-of-way, mainly because the acquisition of additional right-of-way and the tearing down of buildings wasn't ever planned for or desired as part of the plan. That just wasn't gonna, that wasn't part of the original plan. So, the question before you tonight, and the question that's been wrestled with ever since we started looking at that, this project, is what can be done within the existing right-of-way? Again, when you add everything up, it's too wide. So, what can be reduced, eliminated, or cut back in order to fit within the right-of-way? And that's been the challenge, and that's really what we're here to talk to you about, some of the concepts and alternatives that have been developed, and some of the associated studies and analysis that's been conducted on those alternatives. So, staff looked at that, and, you know, we looked at, okay, there's travel lanes. You can sacrifice travel lanes, free up space. There's parking, you can sacrifice parking to free up space. There's maybe a center turn lane you can get rid of and free up space. We didn't look at sacrificing sidewalks, because the sidewalks are pretty much as narrow as they can be, given the pedestrian traffic. In fact, they really ought to be wider, and we'll get to that on one of the alternatives. So, we really concentrated between, okay, the area of the curb-to-curb, and that's about 72 feet throughout the corridor. So, it comes, some of this comes back somewhat to simple math, what can fit within 72 feet? When you look at travel lanes at about 12, 10 to 12 feet wide, you look at bike lanes, ideally minimal five feet wide, how do you arrange, and what configuration do you arrange within the corridor to fit? Parking lanes, about eight feet. So, we considered this, and we came up with three, what I'd call, kind of typical alternatives. And they were chosen purposely to analyze potential impacts associated with the sacrifice of each type of improvement within that corridor. They were the two-lane alternative, the four-lane reduced parking alternative, and the four-lane reduced center turn lane alternative. The two-lane alternative, again, the first one, was the one probably that looked at the most and analyzed the most, because, I'll tell you right off the bat, and it provides the most free space, because when you go from four lanes, the existing configuration down to two frees up the most space, gives you the most flexibility for all types of things. The four-lane reduced parking alternative frees up about eight feet of space, and we'll get into the sections in a minute. And then the reduced center turn lane frees up that center turn lane at about 10 feet. In considering these alternatives, we did have to look at design guidelines, various design guidelines, and we had to look at the city general plan, the city bicycle transportation plan, we have engineering standards, and we looked at, we also looked at ASHTO policy on geometric design, Caltrans design manual, and we looked at SEQA issues to evaluate and kind of compare these alternatives. I'll go to the next slide. So, the first thing we had to do is what technical studies would be necessary in order to supplement or inform the decision? And when you think about the alternatives and why they were selected, if you think about this, the two-lane alternative sacrifices travel lanes, so we really needed a traffic analysis or analysis of the potential traffic impacts for that. So, there was a, an operational analysis using the city's traffic model. The reduced parking analysis obviously impacts parking, so we needed a parking study to understand the use, the inventory, the demand of parking throughout Old Town. And then also, because of the changes in delay and congestion, we also conducted a preliminary greenhouse gas emissions analysis. And these are just some of the studies that would be necessary in taking these alternatives through a SEQA environmental review process, but they also help inform the discussion. First is the parking study. And the parking study is attached to the report, all these studies are attached to the report. It was conducted in 2011 by Walker Parking Consultants, and they did just what we asked them to do, identify the existing conditions, conduct a comprehensive parking inventory, look at demand needs analysis, they also conducted some public workshops and a stakeholder survey. And it was a fairly comprehensive survey, but it didn't go to the point to identify specific mitigation for a specific project, because we weren't there yet. This is a baseline conditions document, which will be an excellent document to work from to determine and/or mitigate parking impacts if any of the alternatives that have parking impacts are selected for further review. Go ahead. The survey that was done was kind of interesting. Surveyed 400 and some odd people. And after, you know, it's a parking analysis, but when they asked the respondents to rank the importance of these various issues, it was interesting, improved lighting was ranked significantly higher than the rest, then more landscaping, better traffic flow, bike lanes, wider sidewalks, and then at the least, the least in priority ranked by the respondents was more on-street parking. So, that, the parking consultant found that somewhat interesting, given the number of people that they actually surveyed. I think one of the reasons, well, we can get into that later, the two-lane operational analysis, this is the traffic study that was done to analyze the potential impacts and effects by reducing Hollister Avenue from four lanes to two lanes through the corridor. And again, that was used based on the city's traffic, the city has developed a traffic model, it was used for the general plan, it's used for all development applications that come in, it's a, it's a model that's used to determine traffic assignment, distribution, levels of service, and it's a good model to compare comparative analysis between scenarios. So, it was used to compare traffic impacts and outcomes of a two-lane, a two-lane facility. It was based on 2008 traffic data, and we have some more information on traffic data, because that sounds kind of outdated, it's 2013. We've been tracking traffic data since the city's incorporation, and typically, it's about a 2% to 3% increase until about 2007 or 2008. Two things happened, the economy turned south, and the gas prices went up. And we actually saw for the first time in several years about a 10% reduction in, generally across the system, in traffic trips. But then, since then, we've got data that shows it's jumped back up, and it's now exceeding the data or the counts in 2008. The model was also run in two ways. It was run under current conditions, what would happen right now if you went to two lanes, given current traffic conditions. And then it was also run in a forecast mode, like we've done for development projects and general plan. What about future conditions? What about when the city builds out? What about when the city makes all the transportation improvements included in the city's general plan? What happens then? And so, those results were actually looked at, too. Let's see, what else? I think the results of it are a bit optimistic, given that the current counts are higher than the 2008 counts, but the results, again, are based on the 2008 counts. The last study, well, not really the last study, another study attached, I had mentioned, was the greenhouse gas emissions analysis, and this is now a requirement of SEQA for projects, and the concern with changing traffic patterns is potential impacts to greenhouse gas emission levels. And so, it's based on a traffic, the traffic model, with the analysis done, basically longer delays, longer trip distances, basically more time in your car idling, accelerating, and stopping creates a certain level of carbon dioxide or greenhouse gases. These models estimate the change or the production of greenhouse gases in a comparative mode to an existing baseline. So, that was done. This would also be part of this SEQA analysis. And one other analysis that wasn't really shown up here was this two, of the center turn lane, the reduced center turn lane alternative. That was looked at preliminarily in a, in the traffic model, but that would have to do, undergo further analysis to get the geometry and the driveway influences kind of ironed out. So, now I'm going to talk just briefly about each alternative, explain them a little more, walk you through what they include, kind of what we see, the advantages, the challenges are of each alternative, and then what the various studies associated with each alternative found. So, first is the two-lane alternative. Again, this was the first one we looked at, and we looked at it really hard, because it would free up the most right-of-way. Again, if you get rid of two lanes, you've got 10 times 2, 12 times 2, probably 20 to 24 feet of additional right-of-way to accommodate everything else. So, it does provide the most flexibility. This two-lane alternative, it looks like this, one 12-foot travel lane in each direction, the 12-foot center turn lane, wide bike lanes, seven foot wide, eight-foot parking on both sides, and existing curves and sidewalks to remain. This convention or this, this cross-section was chosen, it could be, it could be modified, it could be changed. This one was just for a typical section of what a two-lane could be. There's all sorts of other improvements and things that can be done, again, because of the flexibility of this, of this alternative. The four-lane reduced parking, it keeps the two lanes of travel in each direction, keeps center turn lane, but it removes parking on the south side of the street. Let me explain that. The south side of the street was chosen, it could have been either north or south, but in order to free up enough room to provide biking, we looked at the south side. The south side actually has less parking than the north side. I think it's 25, 20 some odd parking spaces versus 40, I think, on the north, 65 total in the corridor. This has five-and-a-half-foot bike lanes, not as wide as the other one, and the existing curves and sidewalks remain. And so, here's that section, and again, if you walk through it, if you could see it, center turn lane, travel lane, parking lane, biking on either side, and the only difference is one side has parking and one side doesn't. This would be, I guess, looking east. The four-lane reduced center turn lane alternative, this is where you've got two lanes in each direction, but no center turn lane except at signalized intersection. You still have parking on both sides of the street, to the extent possible, you'd probably have to remove some of that parking, because you would have to still widen out the center turn lane at the, at certain signalized intersections. And then, existing curb and gutters remain. So, again, this one, this is a center turn lane alternative mid-block, so you've got four-way traffic kind of right by each other, you've got the bike lanes, you've got parking on either side. And then if you come up to an intersection, the next slide, oh, we didn't put it in. Well, it would show a center turn lane, and then no parking, like you kind of have now at the intersections, no parking next to the intersection. This one, go back to that, this is one, again, that would take a little, these all would take more analysis, and I'll explain that at the end, the various work efforts that are necessary to fully vet and fully consider the details associated with each of these alternatives. The cross-sections themselves are just showing in a, in somewhat of a gross manner what your typical cross-section would entail, but it doesn't show all the very detailed stuff, like how would crosswalks be improved? You know, crosswalks improvements could be done on all the alternatives, some to a greater extent than others. But it just really shows kind of at a very basic level what your concept cross-section would look like. Okay, so, evaluation of these. Go to the next one. First, first the two-lane alternative, and go ahead. I mentioned, we looked, looked at this and continue to look at this because of the benefits. Frees up to 20 feet, allows for the maximum flexibility in the corridor, allows for class two bike lanes, maintains parking, maintains center turn lane, and there's room enough to either widen sidewalks or modify the cross-section somewhat in the future. The challenge is, while it has the greatest benefit in terms of freeing up and flexibility, it also has the great, some of the greatest challenges, because when you reduce the four lanes to two lanes, that traffic that would be normally going through in four lanes has to fit through two lanes. So, what happens? A big chunk of it diverts and impacts other intersections, and then a big chunk of it gets in a long queue waiting to get through the corridor. And we have some pictures of queues and static backup and stuff like that. So, again, this, this alternative could result in both regional and local traffic impacts that would need to be mitigated. It could increase greenhouse gas emissions, based on the analysis, significantly. It could increase neighborhood cut-through, because the, the amount of traffic that would be getting through on two lanes would be so frequent that the gaps in the traffic would be so small that people would tend to try to cut through the adjacent neighborhoods because they couldn't get on to or off of the corridor. That would be a challenge. It would also result in loss of development impact fees. Let me explain that a little bit. We collect, the city collects development impact fees for future projects to pay their fair share of the future impacts. This project is kind of the city's project, and the city would have to pay for these, to mitigate these impacts. The off-site mitigation is potentially very expensive, and this is something that would really, we'd really need to focus on to further evaluate this alternative, is what type of mitigation would be required? And when you look in the traffic analysis and you look at the intersections that are impacted, so in your mind's eye, if people are driving, let's say, west on Hollister, and they know that there's significant delays in a backup in Old Town, they divert which way? They can't divert south, so they typically divert north, hit the freeway interchange, maybe up to Cali Real, and avoid Old Town, and then maybe come back down on Fairview if they had to. Same thing going the other direction. So, if you look at the map and the delay and the diversion, it's kind of all areas around the box. And these, the study did include Equil Fowler as being constructed, because there's a big question, how much traffic can, can Equil take? Because Equil goes, you know, will go in the future from Kellogg to Fairview, there's a chance to, for it to divert some traffic. It just doesn't divert enough when you're talking about 20,000 ADT in a four-lane scenario down to a two-lane scenario, there's just not enough to pick up on Equil Fowler. So, a significant amount of diversion and delays could result. We talked about the neighborhoods north of Hollister being impacted, Highway 101, Fairview and Patterson being impacted, the other cut-throughs, the only other cut-throughs to the south, Carson Street, Equil Fowler, and then to the north, Cali Real. The diversion hits those other areas and impacts those other intersections. But the queuing, and the queuing is basically just the backup of vehicles trying to get through from four lanes down to two lanes. And they did what's called a static queuing analysis, and they found significant queuing, and we have some maps in a minute, Highway 217, westbound Hollister, Kidman to Sumida, eastbound Hollister from Fairview to David Lopez, Fairview Avenue in Old Town, anywhere you're seeing that conversion from four lanes to two lanes would be significant queuing. And then the other queuing impacts would be at the other intersections where that diversion would occur. So, here's some slides, and I apologize, they're probably pretty tiny, go ahead, throw them up. Just real quick, we did the queuing analysis, and we put, we color-coded them, but wherever you see a color, that represents a queue. Reds probably go back, red's probably the worst, because what red indicates is there's a spill-back or a queue beyond the upstream signalized intersection. The orange is a spill-back to a non-signalized intersection. The blue indicates right-or-left turn starvation, meaning people trying to turn right or left can't even get to the location to turn. And then yellow represents spill-back blocking on one or two or more driveways. So, if you look at, just forget the colors for a minute, and just look at the colors on the map, all colors combined. So, this is the corridor, and this is existing traffic volume, existing. So, here's, here's Kellogg, here's Highway 217, and the westbound queue goes up through 217, but all, not all the way to Equil. You've got backups on Kellogg, backups all through the corridor, and then you can't really see it, significant backups on the interchange, trying to get off the freeway, because all of Fairview is, it's not shown on this slide, but significant backups, and then backups down here. That's existing, and then you go to 2030, and that line extends clear past, oh, what's that?
Sumida?
Sumida, Gordon.
No, Sumida's next. What's the first one right past?
Ward.
Thank you, St. Joseph's. And then again, you see the blue, where, right now, in current conditions, you kind of see that backup from the northbound Fairview ramp intersection up the hill. This goes all the way up the hill, all the way through Fairview, and all the way down here, and then it goes off the chart here, you don't even see the end of it. Go to the next one. Here's other locations, so you see the ramp, off-ramp, and Fairview Avenue on existing up and into Cali Real, so Cali Real, Fairview's impacted. You see the queue down the southbound off-ramp, and you see the stacking along the corridor in south. And then go to 2030, and it just gets longer, gets onto the freeway, gets further up Fairview, it's all the way over Fairview, and all the way down, all the way out, all the way there. So, this is, again, some of the significant challenges in terms of, just when you're looking at diversion and queuing, that would have to, we'd have to look at mitigation measures, and how would we mitigate those off-site impacts? Okay, this is another look at Patterson, and again, there's, here's the backup into the, from the corridor on existing, you've got backup at Patterson and Hollister, backup going up onto the ramps, across the, across the bridge and at the other ramps, and go to 2030, and then this shows backup, does the blue line go off?
Yep, goes off the, goes off now.
Goes off, southbound, here, all the way through across. So, this is significant queuing on peak hour, peak hour times. Okay, four-lane reduced parking, so that, we want to show some of the results, the traffic study, not to be, not to pick on that alternative, because I will say it again, it is, gives you the most flexibility in the corridor. The challenge with that alternative is it also has the most significant off-site traffic impacts. And so, mitigation of those traffic impacts, I think, are going to be the key in trying to figure out how to do, if you want to go forward with that alternative. So, we went to the next one, the reduced parking, and again, this frees up eight feet, because you, basically, you're eliminating a parking lane, and a parking lane is about eight feet wide. So, it does give you enough room to get your class-two bike lanes all the way through, maintains parking on the north side of the street, includes a center turn lane, and the sidewalks could be, might be widened a little bit in the future, but for the current, it's just existing sidewalks and curves. Obvious challenge would result in parking impacts that must be mitigated. So, it states this alternative would move up to 27 parking spaces on the south side. We're still trying to figure out where the 27 came from, when I counted, it last was like 25, but I think there's a few unmarked spaces that you could squeeze cars in. These, these losses would need to be mitigated, and ideally, as close as possible to the businesses that lost on-street parking. You're going to hear, and we've heard in the past, and that's why the avoidance of trying to, the avoidance of parking impacts on this corridor, you know, would be ideal if it weren't for all the other constraints on the corridor. I think the businesses that have the on-street parking, you'll hear from them tonight, that's probably one of the most vital parking that they have, is right next to their door front. So, what, what would we have to do? We'd have to look at options to replace these lost spaces, including possible lease agreements of owners of private lots, to try to mitigate any lost parking as close as possible to the businesses that are losing, potentially losing parking. The four-lane center turn lane, four-lane reduced center turn lane- The four-lane center turn lane, four-lane reduced center turn lane alternative, I showed you this before, again, it basically frees up some right-of-way to allow Class II bike lanes by getting rid of the center turn lane. And so where you don't need a center turn lane, you free up that 10 feet, parking on both sides, two lanes, it maintains the two lanes of traffic. But where you need to widen out again, because of the, you want to provide for that left turn at the signalized intersections, that's where you would, you could have parking impacts. And we haven't done the geometrics on this, because the, the merged length and the, what's called taper distances need to be really looked at to see how feasible this is. So this one really needs to go through, like they all do, additional analysis to know exactly how much parking can we salvage on both sides, how much parking may be impacted. As mentioned, kind of an unknown number of parking until we do the geometric analysis, additional engineering is necessary. So kind of in summary, all of the alternatives require some additional level of engineering and design, technical studies, due to the type and magnitude of the impacts or potential impacts generated. And it's, it's kind of ironic, it was this time a year ago that we had developed these alternatives to this point when the RDA was dissolved by the state. And so that's kind of why we're, we're back here a year later, I think, with the renewed interest, partially as a result of the Cal Poly urban planning project, to bring this back before you for consideration. And with the loss of RDA funding, there's really no funding identified at this point for any of these projects within the budget. So regardless of the direction or path forward, staff would have to really go back and, and consider costs, timing, implementation, everything, to implement any of these alternatives going forward, and that's, that would be our, our next step. So the, the last thing on the summary, again, is the public hasn't had a whole lot of opportunity to review and vet all these. This is kind of the first time this has come out. We would recommend that additional public outreach be done. There's a lot of information in here to fully vet these alternatives, and to ensure that all segments of our affected community have, have an opportunity to provide input and inform the discussion. So with that, I think I'll, I'll call it quits. Answer any questions you might have on the presentation, and then be able to answer questions that may be raised later.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Hope your voice stays with us the rest of the evening. Okay, counsel, any technical questions of Mr. Wagner, Ms. Aglione? Ms. Prodey?
Just have one to start off with, and then maybe, I don't know if we're going to have public comment, and we'll have more comments, but I'm just wondering, what role the planning department played in determining the level of environmental analysis required for this project? Are they, I'm actually quite surprised that they're not here tonight to answer questions about complete streets and SEQA and AB 2245.
Planning will play their typical role in terms of determining the level of environmental review. The level of environmental review and the process is going to be dependent upon the alternative, based on the level of impact and everything else, because some alternatives would require general plan amendments, modifications possibly to SEQA thresholds for the city, findings, possibly overriding, findings of overriding consideration, just numerous things. So it's really dependent on the direction given. Either, any of the alternatives are going to require some level of SEQA to go, to go forward. And we can talk, talk about assembly bills at 22...
Forty-five.
Forty-five, if you, if you want to talk about that, or wait till later.
Oh. Now, would be good.
Okay.
Is Jennifer here? We'll go.
Is she here?
Oh, sure.
Do we have that one? Okay, 2245, a basic assembly bill that provides certain exemptions for projects, and we don't have all the language up here, but, and subject to legal counsel, further review. On staff's first read, we do not believe it applies to the project. The configuration of Hollister must comply with the general plan, transportation plan. The city is required to prepare an assessment of any traffic and safety project, and include measures in the project to mitigate potential impacts to vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians, and hold public hearings. And so when you read back, when you read through that provision, you need to, it applies to all these, but these things still kick us, kick us out, based on our read. We'd have to get legal counsel to verify that, but based on our read of that, flush, it doesn't appear to apply. In other words, we can't exempt a two-lane alternative from SEQA based on the impacts that we've identified to date.
Now, can I pursue this? The, and I don't know what the gospel may be here, ultimately, on this, but I had, what I thought was reasonable authorities tell me that 2245 excluded road diets from a SEQA analysis. Now, is that, do we know that to be a fact, or do we know that not to be a fact?
It's when certain conditions exist, when there's no significant environmental impacts, I believe, there's, it's conditioned. But again, we can get legal. I think Legal's pulling it up right now.
Okay, well, while he's hammering on that...
Well, one thing I would say is that the two-lane Hollister would have to be in the, in the general plan. I mean, you have to already have it in, in your plan, so right off the bat, you don't have that, that configuration in the general plan, so it's not as easy to... I think this, this law just allows for fast-tracking for things that have minimal impact.
Mm-hmm. You know, I haven't been on the council that long, but I have not had the feeling quite that the general plan was a sacred document here. We have amendment, amended it on any number of occasions. So if it becomes during the course of discussion and public input, that is the desired alternative, then we'll amend the general plan and charge ahead.
Absolutely. We're just raising and, and informing you as to the steps that would be necessary to go forward.
Okay. All right, now, he's actually playing Tetris here, but...
Well, you're not going to get legal analysis from me on the fly.
Yeah, that's not fair.
Well, not only that, I mean, I'm not sure where this came up, but the analysis is the same. Once we have a project, we'll tell you what, what the process is for that project. We don't have a pro, a project to do an analysis on to tell you what, what the process is going to be. We've looked at, at potential projects, and, and we have not identified what, what that process is going to be, other than we will go through the analysis, and we'll tell you, you know, what is it that is, is required to comply with SEQA? Does it, is it exempt from further analysis? Is it an exemption? Is it a mitigated negative declaration? Is it an environmental impact report? And I think our analysis has been consistent that once we have a project, and once we've have vetted out what the, the details of that project are, then we can answer those questions. But you don't answer the questions from the end before you know what you're talking about. So we're not, we're not going to do that tonight.
All right, on, on, if we just stay on that for a second. SEQA, I have heard also from several different sources that sometimes it, you don't even need to invoke the process. Now, in this case, couldn't you argue that since the traffic flow is going to stay the same, or perhaps decrease because of this process, that you wouldn't need a SEQA analysis of it? Couldn't you be exempt from it under those circumstances?
I think back to Tim's point, it really depends on what project we're talking about.
Well, in this case, the road diet, what I, what might be said about Assembly Bill 2245 is that its only application is to the two-lane alternative, since the others are not really a diet in that sense, because what we're doing is, we're finding space, but the, but the, the level, the lane level stayed the same. So I was assuming that it would only have an application to 2245, because that is where we're constricting the traffic flow.
I, I think the challenge in the 2245 is the, the, the impacts, the off-site, regional traffic impacts that could be created. I think if you had a gridded system, and that the impacts and traffic had an ability to disperse, and not be focused on maybe one or two primary routes, and we weren't talking at, at the volumes we're dealing with, and the diversion and delay we're dealing with, and it was adopted in all our plans, and we did planning, and I think it, it might, it might work. But again, I'm, I'm not going to do legal analysis on the fly either. I think it, it's going to be a challenge because of the potential off-site impacts.
Okay, I didn't, if, if we can digress just a tad on this, I, as I looked at these diagrams, I didn't understand why the off-ramp at Fairview would be impacted such a negative fashion from this two-lane alternative. Can you explain how that would come to pass?
If, if you're, if you're wanting to avoid the area because of the delay, whatever, the, the hopscotch, the shortest hopscotch around, potentially, is up Patterson, onto the 101, off Fairview, and down. That's why that one seems to be hit. So there's that, there's that maneuver, and then there's the, the other direction. If they didn't want to go through Old Town and use the freeway now for their through trip, they would go up Fairview, and then that interaction of that southbound ramp intersection, backing up into the interaction of the northbound intersection, that's why all of Fairview seems to be potentially impacted by that.
You could turn that around and say, if people are finding alternative routes and not using Hollister, then your average daily trips on Hollister will be reduced as well. That is, people will find, like water, will find the easiest path, and that may actually work to the advantage of doing a two-lane alternative, mightn't it?
If you had other routes that weren't either at or just under the threshold of SEQA, okay? These other routes, these other locations, don't have huge excess capacity to absorb the diverted trips. So that's why they're triggering, if you look at the table, in the future, in existing below thresholds.
Okay, thank you.
May I follow up on that? Have we, and I didn't notice, but if we left everything exactly the same in Old Town, four lanes, have we done an analysis of what 2030 would look like? Would we still have an impact on those intersections? What's it going to look like in 2030?
Yeah, the regardless.
Regardless.
So that, that's what the general plan did. The general plan looked at build-out pursuant to the general plan, forecast future traffic, and then identified improvements that are going to be, needed to be made, that are part of our GTIP, our capital, future capital plan, to mitigate the growth identified in the general plan. So that's included, and that's planned for in the general plan. What, what we, what we see in this analysis, what this diversion does, is even after you rebuild or correct for general plan build-out, it breaks anyways, and you have to fix it either further or fix it again. The level to which, the cost to which, and the, the type of fix, that hasn't been determined yet.
Mr. Wagner, you did not talk much, I can understand, because reading is fierce, about the parking study that was done, and the alternatives that that presents for that use in Hollister corridor, which, I mean, I, I look at, we've got five basic uses going on, there's buses, there's trucks, there's cars, there's bicycles, and parking. And the only thing that can move from that Hollister corridor, we've got too much going on there, and we're never going to solve the problem with little solutions. So if we provide two-for-one parking, two spaces behind for every one space we remove, we change the dynamic significantly. One, we get a whole lane, which was parking on the south side. Two, we have a lot more parking than we have now, which the parking study says, hey, you're not making use of the parking spaces that are available, that individual property owners are using to store far less than the capacity of the lot. Now, you're not going to reduce the cars, the buses, the trucks. The bicycles, hopefully, are going to increase. You move the parking, on one side, you get eight feet. On two sides, good grief, we can start having outdoor cafes along Hollister, and a sit-and-slip, sip, whatever you want to sip. Can't do that, not after today. But it seems to me the parking study is fundamental to coping with the problem on Hollister, because that's the one thing that we can move. We can't move the other ones. But we can have the other ones happily, as long as we get rid of the immovable barriers, and provide, we don't have an improving Hollister project, we have a parking project. And we don't make any changes to the parking on Hollister until we have more parking in back of the commercial uses, and with enforcement running back up the streets that intersect. It seems like a, you know, the only real solution to the problem, and if we don't solve it in this iteration, do we come back to it every five years and, and fiddle with it a little bit? I don't think so. So I, if you could give us more of what's in here.
I did just kind of breeze over the parking study, and it was a comprehensive analysis, inventory, demand, and use, and it does find that there's a significant surplus of available parking in Old Town. Now, that doesn't mean it's the most convenient parking, and part of this is convenience, part of it is location, okay? There's probably no better parking spot. You'll hear this from the business owners and the one right out front their door. And if they have to walk a block, you know, what does that mean for their clients, their, their business, their whatever? So again, the, the parking study is a really good study as a baseline condition study. It provides all the baseline information, then to know if a parking, reduced parking alternative is something we want to further evaluate, then we can get more detailed of, okay, this is the area that's impacted, where are the, the nearest parking? How would those parking spaces be mitigated, at what ratio? And so much more specific information would need to be done on the parking mitigation for any alternative that would impact parking. And you're absolutely right, the best way to do that is provide it upfront first.
Can I weigh in on that parking thing? Did you want to go?
Well, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Bennett, then, then, then me, then you.
I'm glad that Councilmember Easton brought up the parking, because I, sorry about that. I'm glad that Mr. Easton brought up the, the issue on the parking, because to me, that's, that's one of the basic functions, and the so-called parking study that was done, I've expressed this before, I, I think it was lacking, could have been done better, there's more information that's actually available. And if you look at the original, we, the Old Town Revitalization Plan that was adopted in June of 1999... in June of 1998 by the County Board of Supervisors, and you look, turn to page seventy-three, you get a summation of existing surface lot parking spaces, and through working with the property owners, where there's existing 502 spaces, there's 683 spaces potentially available. And the reality is, there's even more potentially available, because they didn't look at all the possibilities, one of which we already directed staff to do for the review of the community center, for example, which would add even more potential parking spaces. So it would seem to me that the emphasis on the parking has always come second. It hasn't, we've been looking at everything, and it's, to me, it's the 800-pound gorilla that's in the room, that if we were able to solve the parking issues, then we could better utilize the roadway left available within Hollister Avenue as one way to go. Now, the ultimate solution, which some of the folks who recall, those of us that sat on the GOTAC way back when, and I thank staff for this, because I'd forgotten that this had been presented, and I'm not sure why it escaped my memory, because it was the subcommittee that I chaired for circulation that developed this thing. So I can't take credit for it, it was just something we did together, but it was never adapted by staff, and it was never put into the ultimate approved program. But if you want to get rid of traffic on Hollister Avenue, you have to do it with a bypass. Now, I recognize not everyone can see this document, it's quite small. Unfortunately, I wish I had a slide so you could, in fact, see, you could evaluate it yourself, and it's not definitive, so no one needs to be offended, oh, gosh, that's going to take my building, or this or that. It's just an idea of a bypass, essentially from where the new church is being built on Hollister Avenue and Semina Gardens Way. It would travel from that, south of Hollister, across until it came out where the former Elephant Bar was, no longer there, and that's essentially how it would travel, and it would come through the middle of the Fairview Center. That ultimately would provide the answers that are necessary to alleviate the traffic impact along Hollister Avenue. But we all know that you're talking about a lot of money, that would not come cheap. They're talking about a lot of expense to accomplish that goal. And EQUIL, which went through a lot of iterations during the 1996 process, and then later, is certainly a part of the answer to that, and we've got funding for that, although it drops below, and it's, from my perspective, not practical to affect the traffic on Hollister Avenue because of how it's currently configured. It certainly begins to set the stage to make that impact. So is there anything that we can look at that, on that bypass road configuration, that would help us for the ultimate solution to Hollister Avenue? Or is it? Maybe that's the question I need to ask. Isn't, in fact, the ultimate solution to the traffic impact along Hollister Avenue?
Well, given the major challenge with Hollister, and where you're going, and where it's coming from, is there is no other east-west arterial south of Highway 101. And unfortunately, the way GLEDA developed, it wasn't planned to serve the community that it has become. We don't have a gridded system, we don't have connecting arterials, and this is one area that it's significantly impacted because of that. The current Equil Fowler alignment from Fairview to Kellogg would provide that southern section of Old Town an alternate route either to Kellogg or Fairview without having to go up to Hollister either direction. So it will help some. I think what you're pointing to is any new arterial that can help distribute the traffic load east and west will help. The question is going to be at what cost, at what timing, and everything else, because that extension, I think you've, you could probably turn to the last page and look at the order of magnitude of cost. It would involve modifications to 217, raising 217, that would implicate UCSB, that would implicate City of Santa Barbara and acquisition of lands across the airport. It's an expensive alternative, but it could be an alternative, you know, looked at, modeled and analyzed. It's just another potential. Is it the ideal? We really don't know without really looking at it.
But I guess my point, if it's never included in anything that looks to vision or look to the future like the general plan should, then it never gets looked at, it never becomes definitive, it never becomes something that you plan for, even though you don't have the money today. As we've seen through our lifetimes, there's been many, many times when we've gotten stimulus money, it's been called by different names, but certainly in my lifetime, it's popped up a half a dozen different times. And so monies do become available if you've got a plan, and if you've got something that you've looked at, that you might be able to go forward and make a difference. And I recognize, it isn't going to happen tomorrow. I clearly recognize, we don't have the resources for that. But what's frustrating for me is not having a plan to look to the future to be able to effectuate the change that we knew, know, I believe we know, is necessary, and the fact that there's going to be increased traffic, most likely. As hard as we work on it, it seems like we're almost like running in place. It's kind of like trash, do you? We've done all this recycling, yet we're still kind of at the same spot for total tonnage.
Your frustration is understood. However, I will say that you have, you and the council, have the ability to set forth such a plan.
That would be my hope.
That's not a staff, that's not a staff thing, that's a policy, transportation element, change, and again, as we've been reminded, the general plan can be changed, it's been changed numerous times in the past.
You know, Mr. Reiden, you've thrown a lot of information very quickly, but this is such a huge, huge issue. It's not just as simple as changing the general plan, because the general plan has a domino effect on so many other issues. You mentioned the circulation element, all the impacts, the other intersections at CEQA, the greenhouse gases, but the one thing that you haven't talked about is the impact to our CIP program. We've got an approved budget already, we've got a lot of things on our plate, and how this fits in, in your staff planning, workload, funding, lack of funding, the RDA going away. Of course, if we had that $75 million that we gave the county, I think we could have fixed Old Town. But what I want to know is, ultimately, do we have an idea how much these plans would cost monetarily? But what would we be giving up? Because it's easy for us to make a decision, but decisions are all about prioritizing. And, you know, just give us a flavor of some of the stuff you're doing now that would impact a diversion of a huge amount of money to something like this today.
We've presented our capital plan to you several times, and it's not gotten any less, it continues to grow. And with the amount of staff we have, we are fully enveloped on a day-to-day basis with several large-scale capital projects, whether it's San Jose Creek, Equil Fowler, bridge projects about to come online. We've got, there's a lot going on, and you've seen our reports, you've seen our weekly reports. This will impact the existing work schedule, work effort, budget, because it's not currently planned for in this year's budget. As far as the level to which other projects are impacted or delayed, and the priority to which you give this work effort upon direction, we would have to go back and look at, you know, which projects are critical. We cannot just say, okay, San Jose Creek, just stop, we're going to focus on Hollister. You know, there are several projects at critical phases with money on the line that we really wouldn't recommend any less effort than we're trying to expend, because there's literally tens of millions of dollars of grant funding that are approaching critical timelines. So we would have to work whatever direction you give us into a work schedule, into a financial plan, and come back to you with some, probably some tough choices and trade-offs. We're not ready to do that tonight, because we don't know what the direction is. It's really going to depend on, do you want us to focus on one, two, three, all of them? You want us to focus on a new one? What do you want us to do? We are here, ready to take any policy direction you give us, and we'll come back and inform you to the best of our ability what those impacts and trade-offs will be.
And a final question, obviously, none of these three alternatives are fully cooked yet, a lot of work needs to be done. How do you envision vetting them, make sure all the stakeholders are involved? So at the end of the day, we have a project that we can all pretty much agree with, understanding that it's going to be a staged, multi-year project?
I think for further stakeholder involvement, we really have to go back and answer some very big questions, and it depends on the alternative. For the two-lane, we're really going to have to get back down to what mitigation, what is the mitigation specifically, where, what has to be done? And while we've got a good baseline conditions analysis, you know, that needs to be refined in order to take it to that next level. On the reduced parking, whether any parking, we really have to go back to the baseline document, even the revitalization plan, take a look at those opportunities, take a look at the demand, the surplus, where it's located. Is it surface lot, easements, acquisition? Is it different configurations of side streets to provide additional parking? There's numerous ways potentially to mitigate parking, but we'd have to get some specifics. And once we had those dialed a little more, and had some options, say, on the mitigation, where we could provide options, for instance, on parking, then stakeholder outreach and input, we'd have more information to provide, more information for them to look at. For the reduced center turn lane, we really need to look more at the geometrics to identify and further define the scope, and really decide if that's really what we've kind of coined as a compromise between the parking and the traffic.
Okay. Any other questions? Do you want to take public comment, then come back with questions?
Well, actually, we've got, you know, you go, and actually, I'd like to pick one more.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to go back to--
They're taking pokes at you.
I hear it.
I just want to go back to the study, and for me, you know, there's, of any place in GLEDA, you know, Old Town is a place where we should be prioritizing bicyclists and pedestrians. So I'm wondering why the multimodal level of service analysis, LOS, was not presented in this study, so that we can see the difference between alternatives for these different modes. And we know that our consultant that worked on this, it's a fine consultant, he was very instrumental, and he's very familiar with multimodal level of service and its development. So I'm wondering why that wasn't addressed in this study.
I talked to him, actually. We know that there's not a question that a two-lane Hollister wouldn't make it nicer for bicyclists and pedestrians. So it didn't seem like we needed to, we had them do a lot of things in a really short period of time. I think there was agreement that it would be an improvement for bicyclists and pedestrians. So gauging whether or not it would improve things, or how much it would improve things, didn't seem to be the critical factor. We wanted to look at, you know, what were the hurdles, what were the traffic impacts?
If I can, it just hasn't been done yet. The first and primary concern with that was the traffic impacts, and we really had to look at it, because we knew we had to identify what off-site impacts would occur, because that's really a driver in consideration. We can look at the multimodal model, too, they have the ability, and if that's a direction given, we can do. Again, all these are going to take a lot more detailed engineering and work before they're anywhere close to implementation.
And then also, another thing in this study that I, maybe I overlooked it, but was there, I didn't see the traffic safety analysis, is there, was that in there, a complete traffic safety analysis for this project?
In terms of?
Accidents, just safety as a whole.
On a future condition or existing?
Existing.
Yeah. Now, the city tracks traffic accidents, and there's a lot of information, you'll hear some of it tonight, about the traffic accidents in Old Town. And I'll say this, that traffic accidents tend to follow congestion in vehicle miles, where there's more cars, more interactions, you have more traffic accidents. So Old Town, because of the interaction, the driveways, the four lanes, the pedestrians, it has a high number of accidents, not a high, what we'd call, incident rate? So for instance, if you look at another high-volume corridor, Stork-Hollister, if you look at the number at Stork-Hollister, it's higher than Fairview-Hollister, because it's got a higher volume. In fact, if you look at the Stork corridor during the same time period, I think from Phelps to Calerreal, that has a higher number. Again, it's because of the overall vehicle miles traveled. And if you look at the incident rate, they'll boil it down to per million miles. That's really what we look at more than anything else, as far as there's a spike.
So it wasn't in this report?
That's not part of that report.
I think for me, that would have been helpful to look at. And so also in the report, then there wouldn't be any acceptable level of service for pedestrians or bicyclists. There's nothing in there that identifies level of service for bicycles or pedestrians.
Not at this time.
Okay.
This is a preliminary report, and a preliminary kind of what's been done to date, so--
It seems like a few things are missing.
Well, that's, and we're not there yet.
No, and we're all looking forward to the day when we are there. And that's one of the things, this, part of this is a political thing. Look at the people that are here tonight, I've never seen a group like this here before. This is hugely important to these people, to the people of GLEDA, and we've changed this now. The RDA, as Mr. Bennett pointed out one time, the RDA's gone away. This decision will be GLEDA's decision now as to what we do in Old Town, because it is, it will be our downtown. So the interest in the general population is huge, and when you, as Mr. Bennett pulled out this thing, the GLEDA Old Town Revitalization, from the county, it's '98, and we're 2013, and we're still debating a lot of the elements that are here. So I think one of the things that we need to be thinking about at the back of our minds is, how do we pull the trigger on something here that is dramatic? Are we going to have perfect unanimity on this? Probably not. But are there reasonable alternatives? Frankly, Mr. Easton started off with something that seemed eminently possible and plausible. If we lost the on-street parking in Hollister, which according to the study, Walker's study, is 4% of the total spaces that are available in Old Town. 1,770 spaces are available, and only 65 of those are on Hollister, one-third of which, he documented at 1 o'clock, the peak hour, one-third of which were there for three or four hours or something? That is, I'm not denying that Hollister Avenue on-street parking is important, but as these guys pointed out, Walker pointed out in his study, there's plenty of land around there. We haven't used it effectively. That very capable lady to your left and I have had a number of discussions about this, Ms. Caglione, and she has talked about, as did the county, she was talking about ways we can add additional parking so that the businesses that are on Hollister don't feel the ill effects of this, and that we can make a street one-way and do parking down both sides of it-- And that we can make a street one-way and do parking down both sides of it. Anyway, we can restripe. This document talks a ton about the private-public partnership that's available, where we go in and we work with the owners, perhaps giving them a financial stipend, certainly improving their place, restriping, landscaping, bringing it around, and making it nicer. So it's, and, I mean, that seems like a reasonable alternative here. And what we're doing is, we're doing things that don't cost a lot of money. We don't have a lot of money. If we're looking for it, if we're waiting for it, we will be waiting, I'm afraid, an excessive amount of time. So anyway, I wanted to say that, and I'll probably go off on this at a later moment here, but I wanted to compliment Mr. Easton and the idea of pulling the parking off of Hollister. Thank you.
Okay, I want to bring us back. Do we have questions, our staff?
We have plenty of time to debate it later, but let's make sure that council has got everything clarified technically from staff.
Yeah, the, did we use in any of this analysis, the $14,300 that is mentioned in the general plan as the capacity for the average daily trips on Hollister? Does that figure into any of this analysis, that $14,300?
It does figure in because it's an adopted threshold pursuant to the general plan. But ADT is just one measure. It's a roadway capacity measure based on the number of lanes. The critical, more critical measure really is the operations at the intersections. But ADT was included, so when you see whether impacts at certain locations are triggered, it's because of that general plan threshold. And as you mentioned, you can change your general plan thresholds.
If we changed it, as I understand this, more recent studies than the general plan was based on 2000, more recent studies since that time put the ADT, average daily trips, something that is feasible and doable more along the lines of 18,000. Had we used 18,000 rather than 14,300, would we have had significant differences in the way we were measuring the impact?
On the existing levels, probably, there'd be a change. On the future, probably not. The 18,000 that's referenced, you've really got to look at what the interactions of the corridor are. If you were looking at a two-lane arterial, say Hollister out towards Macara, outer Hollister, very little friction from side streets, driveways, you know, that probably has a higher ADT capacity than a two-lane in Old Town. Old Town has, I think we have a slide on this, too.
32 driveways.
32 driveways, five intersections, I mean, it's, there's a lot of friction along the corridor, and so that has to be taken into account. So that 18,000, as a general rule, applied to Old Town, it's just not applicable.